Okay, alright. We're leaving with everyone, thanks for coming up. First we're gonna have Isaac Newman from RDM, who wants to have an proposal, want to talk to the board. Isaac, you up?
Alright, thank you very much. Hi, everyone. Thank you very much. We're actually here to propose a concept. With one of our parcels, actually, we came up with a creative idea. We were first, before the board actually went to workshop, I believe we brought it to our workshop originally, had a possible warehouse project, which is normally what we are comfortable doing, that's usually what our focus had been. What we saw, the challenge of this project was that there was some intervening after some wetlands studies and flapping. And we had my groupie out there, we noticed there was a lot of wetlands on the parcel. And, sorry, I don't want to interrupt. Let me start off with where the parcel is. So what about the 12th? Yes. Thank you. I have Charles Gottlieb, our attorney, for our projects. He'll always gonna go through some of the specifics, some of the details on land use for what we're trying to achieve on this project. Also have Justin Bates, who's the lead in chair working on the project as well, has some depth on the history of the project from where we started to where we got to now. So I'm just gonna kind of make a brief and try to understand exactly where we came to with the project. And to announce where the project is by 302, so this is by 302 and 17. That's familiar, there's also a Midland Lake Road, which is actually, we're gonna try to see about access here when I get more into depth and the details of what we're requesting for this parcel. But we'll start off with a little bit back into the history of the parcel, which was, we contracted to hold to create a warehouse project. This area is Zone OR, and what happened was, as we did a lot of wetlands study, realized there was a lot of impact from the wetlands, which led us to limit our area to develop. So, we did also notice that this piece, this parcel, which I think historically was originally Zone OR, that got changed to, I believe, in parcel two, was the only residential portion of it. And we realized that if we could possibly change the concept to adapt, to allow for some sort of residential project, might be beneficial to the township to introduce such projects. So, we went through different scenarios, how we would kind of present it, how we would introduce it, how we would incorporate the project into the land to create the most optimal type of project that would, you know, suit the use for the township. And we believe that this, what we're gonna present to you today, was something that we're very proud of after a lot of investigation. We also utilized, which will have some boards here, who's not here with us today, Jason Anderson, he's an architect that we use in the area. He's done several projects like this in the area as well. So he's onboard with us and has been advising us throughout the process of this project to get to this point. So what we have today is, what we've decided that we would approach the board and request to try and do is a development project that involves two structures with amenities for residential house. So majority of them, I think we actually have it broken down here in the next section here. You know what, I'm gonna let on the details here, go ahead. I'm gonna let some of the details, so it's Justin worked on most of the details. Him explaining to us probably much better than, I'm not as experienced in introducing these kind of projects to the board as Justin is. But Justin, can you just go over some of the details of what we've incorporated into this portion of the parcel?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Before Justin starts, where is your purposes, Justin? Together on a project at the corner? Great. Justin Bates, we call yours engineering design. So as we mentioned, it's actually one of those three state tax lots that the holdings represent. It's just over 210 acres. And as Justin mentioned, it's greatly uncovered by D C wetlands, it's part of the MD10 D C well. And also the side creek, right, has flood plain, floodway. We've got quite a bit of property from that as well. So it takes that 210 acres down to probably about 80ish.
Eighty, I'm good. That's 80 acres right there?
No. What size? That's about 20, 20.
28.
28. I'm sorry. So, and this particular parcel, Midland Lake Road, over on the left-hand side of the plan, 17, bottom and 302, to your form. That's where the other two parcels connect up. So. No, they are. No, it's part of the project.
So the piece on Midland Lake is where the church is?
No, it's at the very, right now, there's a single-family residential for the farm. They're building a small, like, outbuilding. This is 17, so it stops there. And there's a residential house across the street as well. So into, you know, this parcel itself is about 4 acres. But again, it's also encumbered by wetlands, floodplain. So it really takes away all that development area. So this is the one parcel that we're speaking of, to give the blow up. These are the two other parcels. And you can see the pre-conference through here. This is 302, a small area from the, for example, to 302. On this side of the site. Rest of it, you see, more is like a net or a heavily hatched area. That's either wetlands or floodplain. So you can see like these pockets are potential open areas. They are anticipated to be D C wetlands, so they also have that encumbered for adjacent area. Protection along, so further beats into, you know, where you potentially develop there.
So, all three, or you said the one piece of art? Yes, that's right, this pieces are two, and the other two parcels are the other one. But we are gonna talk about just this, and then obviously create some way to incorporate the rest of the process into the project as we further explain what we're gonna propose.
So then, the thought was, the town has the planned residential district overlay placed on top of the parcel. So that's the direction we're going. Town board, the new process to establish that. And what we did is, we looked at this part, this currently R2 zone, place that PRD overlay on. And what we have is, we have our access both the Midland Lake Road, again, the parcel and end of the parcel. It's coming in split and have two buildings, again, in our option areas, like where we can develop.
So, how many units are in those buildings?
So between the two buildings, there's 377.
So would this be the high-density PRD? Because that's only town center. We have a high-density PRD, but it's only in TC. This is not TC.
So PRD in the bottom two, because the move.
But at that density, I don't think it's a bad density.
So, Charlie Gottlieb, Wyman Osterman, and a land use council for RDM. One of the things we wanted to explain tonight is to facilitate this type of development. And what we'll get into a little later is a lot of the public benefits that are gonna come on the backend of this property. Is we would require some zoning text amendments to the planned residential development overlay district. And one of the things we were thinking when we were talking about what that potential text amendment would be, is something that allows the developer to utilize the lot area that's within the wetlands for the lot area calculation, increase density. Additionally, a lot of these rooms that are proposed are gonna be one-bed, right? So one-bedroom rooms have tax benefits, but less tax impacts on the school districts. So there are going to be some text amendments that are necessary for the PRD to allow this type of density. But we think it can be done by the town board on a case-by-case basis with your legislative discretion. So that if those text amendments occur, you can take applicants as they come in and want to utilize this sort of district without having to worry about the opening of floodgate gates with the pixel high-dense projects all over the town. With this overlay district.
The overlay district permitted in R2?
So the PRD district is allowed to be overlaid on the R2 and the N2.
Why don't we go to R2?
So, I mean, there's something else, I mean, this is a pretty big ask. But you mentioned benefits. Yeah. So, but first off, first off, can we deal with the fact that there's a need for housing? We've done a market analysis, we realized that there is a need for housing, especially we wanted those, especially to get more of the professionals that are moving in for a lot of the jobs in the area. We really have seen a lot of options for them to move into a place that has the amenities that attract them, that has the, we're using natural landscaping, and we'll talk about it in a second, I'll explain to you. To be able to create, basically, on the rest of the site, bring this back up here. So our idea was to create some pathways, almost like trails, through to the, basically the dry areas. Allowed also, we were considered creating, some of their cars, or public cars, to be able to park in the dry areas and then have maybe a recreational area between these two dry areas to create more of like our public recreational areas that allow for the housing that's going to be here to utilize the recreational as part and also the public as well to be willing to do that with this plan.
That also, the overlay required water and sewer, which is like, was not that. But it's not high-density. If high-density wanted to be fast, it'd only count something. Follow the high-density, it's a day trip, most of the years. So you couldn't get the high-density PRD, it's not even.
Yeah, so that's why.
So we'd have to change, we'd have to change the zone.
Also, it's pretty big. Also discussing that, some of the public benefits. A one-bedroom that has at least 10,000 square feet.
More than 200.
No, that's right, one. No.
Bring it in.
So you would have to also request the town board to step to water. There's one on the other side, train tracks.
We actually brought the solid road districts, the sewer on 302. I just.
Yeah.
You know, this is separate from the rest of mine, but it's the next side.
So part of the plan, Robert. It's them and both.
Right. Now we can use the R2 for the. But if it's not, it's not.
Yeah.
No, it's good.
Okay, so I think the, the dense calculation based density, 10,000 square feet. 10,000 square feet. However, we will at least have the option of. Let's see where that comes from. Certain public. So I think that we're used to go, that we have this front of the trunk, R2, we have access to the area. Something. Just about a pocket. Looking at the room. Mention to the system.
Also, by the step, we haven't drawn that in, if we did this, we would want the suggestions from the board to be able to utilize space to the best needs of what the township is looking for. So we have to link at this point, but we are offering it so that we can work with the township to see what best suits for the areas that we have.
So if you use the total square footage, then the rest of that property would have. Well, you take all three lots. This is, here is your own lives, so you don't have that. And that type of density, the small piece, is all about town center. So, where I'm talking, probably just a question, a coaching, in order for that to work.
One of the four points here is that all high-density, the R2 and OR district, we are the public community.
That's some pretty big towns for the path.
But it could be done on a case-by-case basis. So I think the worry that I'm hearing is, this is gonna open up the floodgates to everyone who has an OR district or an R2 district to come in for a PRD overlay, so making it high-density. But this board has ultimate legislative discretion. So when you can tailor any sort of text amendment, you'll have no judgment to be on a case. In this instance, because this property is so covered by wetlands, and you have to bring in the water to it, there's a certain level of density that you need, things of development, increase that, right? Other than just simply the single-family water that exists there now, that is vacant. Okay, so we'll explain to you. To sum it up, basically, we have this in capture. We're not settled on our concept here, so we can leave it alone, we can just put it together because we realize that what we know about what's needed in the township for the residential maybe for these type of units was something that we looked at. We would only do a project that made sense for us. We tried, we did the calculations based on the number of units that made sense, the number of units that we felt that the township needed more to facilitate the residential efficiency of allowing for people to come into the township and utilize the apartments to be able to live in the township that have the amenities and the type of development that would attract them. So that's why we got to that density. It just makes sense all around. From the development point, from the numbers point, you need to be able to produce that amount of housing, make an impact, some impact, and less than that, we, as impactful as the amount that we're looking at. We're also not proposing to, we're just not filling out everything here. We're allowing for space to be able to have the right amount of coverage, as Justin explained to you, to also not just fill in every single gap and create that. We also wanted to leave open space for recreation, wanted to leave open space for circulation, wanted to create a really nice, accommodative, attractive type of development. They have some pictures here of 30 buildings.
It's two, two buildings. And they're separated by.
By buffering and natural, that's natural. So then we're small.
So what's in the first?
My first story, there's 277 minutes in the first.
So.
And by speaking about. Sure, 277, the first one and 100.
277. So, if they're four stories, you have probably the high groundings, because our two.
Town speak up.
It's also part of the town board's section, we established that, we can establish that.
Another, no, it's not.
So, the way it works is, the overlay district comes on top of the condo-like development. And the overlay district allows this board to vary the area of all requirements.
Oh, I'm saying that, but it's still. It's from the code.
Do you believe in the code?
You know, with the system, from the board.
From the town board.
From the board.
The requirements.
Of the whole town.
It would be specific to this project, we're asking for the relief to be able to accomplish what we think, and we all think is needed here on both sides, so that's what we're proposing here. And how late is that first lot? Nothing to happen here. Right, that's, rest. I'm separating now. Right, we're interested in doing something here that makes sense for a little bit less otherwise, we can leave this project alone, and I don't know where to go from here, we're just trying to get as creative as possible, we need the board's help to do so. We think that this project would be something that really would help, you know, create the housing necessary, needed for growth, and that's really to do. I think we're accommodating developers, we always look to, you know, work with the town board. We're literally leaving a sub-section of this and trying to create this area so that we can do public recreation. I think that's, there's a lot there that we're, I mean, if you come up with something that makes sense for us, we can all get in a room, talk about it together, and decide if that's something that we should do. But again, we're very open to options, and we're open to recommendations, and we really wanna work with the township. Unlike maybe other developers, just try to push their projects on, I don't think RDM has ever had traffic doing that. We're very easy to work with, we can come at any moment, bring up professionals, try to help explain the situation, try to create an opportunity from whatever exists, if there's some, you know, anything in code that's holding us back, or anything that's, we reviewed this, there's definitely a pathway to succeed, to be able to make this happen, it's just really ultimately up to you. If that's what you want, we can do it, work together and do it together. If you don't want it, can let us know, and we'll do it. But we're really just here to see if we can work together, and that's the fun, stuff we take this kind of this.
The fun is, this is 302 on the right.
We have.
So they need to extend more into the side. Next time.
No, that's not great. Right now, that's not a good thing.
But there is. I think we've done, south of the project, same. It's really, we have sewer. People around College Street or the local extension intersection, but sewer is maybe wrong. Understand, so, you know, sewer is about 22, like, half mile or so, water is just under a mile.
Those are train tracks, you gotta pass. And the other thing, just doing a quick calculation, 48 acres, 377 units, our two piece. It's like 4,000 square feet per unit. So even with our higher density board, I think it's a little over that. Right, so like 5,000 would change. So that would be another, I think, really lower than 5,000. How many of these are one-bed?
Two beds.
So the eight-year, two-bed, double that number, two, maybe like 7,500. I'm just saying, just using the R2 piece. So you would have to do a lot like.
Well, if you're gonna use the calculations, the eight-year, you got to. Now, you want, that's why you have to.
But it doesn't even work in the P I.
So the. The idea would be to, the new version of the PRD that was suggested, you go over the entire property, allow us to use this lot area in the calculation for density here, but would have to be a lot.
Right, we do a lot consolidation.
200 something. That would be the acreage for the density.
This group. Again, any of these examples, some designs are, some of the members of the, Jason Anderson and his work, but really, it's town's choice. Any of these designs that we see here could be anything in the both, in the same range that we were looking at as far as quality-wise, as far as look-wise, but again, it's entirely up to the board to pick. Color, size, variations of different designs here. Again, this is, this, we're really here to create a partnership in this project, nothing more than that. If that's something the board wants to do with us, this is the project that we can bring and create for everything to do.
That's what we do.
Justin, yeah.
We let Trump virtually just all circulate everything, circulate it for the board.
Each one. Yeah, we can go around to them.
Yes.
And also, you know, we're talking at a very high level, obviously, we see here. But at some point, if the board is so inclined, and it's, you know, our office can also show what potential text amendments might be. Because that will give you a visual of how heavy on the lift is this from the legislative maneuver. Because it is hard to theorize, kind of, just with the segment. So we can come up with a red line if this code, if we've got that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody. I have one.
Actually.
Thank you.
Soon as I get this stuff.
Let's have a look at this petition. Show it to you, you get it?
This border, it's a, and then we are being sales, so it's like, we want to. Work through. Oh, you were too.
Yeah.
I think they were, I've been sitting up against. Right, I was sitting up against it or not.
Should we collect change? I don't know. But. That was the original, so like, what we talked about.
Because it was only to, like, customers.
Right.
Wasn't a big, wasn't like.
Yes, yes, yes. Why didn't they?
They wanted to spray.
Right.
Provide us an explanation.
Well, they want to come in and send us. God, if you let me, I'm a fight.
And it was supposed to be a whole big facility.
Yeah, probably.
What happened?
And they weren't forced. They did it. So they did this kind of. Yeah, it was. It didn't need enough water. It weren't in use enough water to warrant a leak.
That's what they said. That was what they.
Why did we do all this? We looked at some numbers.
Alright, so some some things have been coming up with the water, bills and the late fee. Town has problems with, you know, I pay solutions and. The bills and people getting late fee that um. Contacted the bank and it's going back and forth. Um so I think, you know, for the interest of. Looking at each and every bill that um we should consider waiving the penalties on the bills that come in that have issues because of the bill. Uh we were supposed to go with Edmunds on to the building, on to the system. It hasn't happened. Um there was conversations a couple of months ago about this going on and it still hasn't happened. Brandon did reach out to uh.
Other reason Edmund hasn't.
They don't know. They didn't. They have not answered. Um I just saw this today. They, you know, they have not answered, no response.
But is it Edmund's? But is it the bank?
Combination. Oh, I mean. Well, each and every is different. It's before turn. I mean, I have no problem. You know, there's penalty. People want to pay the bill and there's penalty.
Listen, if it's our payment issue that's creating the penalties, obviously, it's a no brainer, right? Whatever we gotta do. The money that the water went through the meter, we have to be paid for, but you know.
Okay, we're waiving penalties on these basis.
Yes.
Make motion.
Can we do a blanket motion for him to be able to do that?
Under under circumstances where it turns out that it's not the customer related, that's all right. It's one thing if they're late and they've gotten the bill. If it's something on our end, whether it's the rate, whether it's Edmund's, anything else.
You're not one of the supervising authorities in there.
To uh to waive waive the penalties as necessary, you may want to put a cap on how much per customer, you know.
It's only one. It would only be one bill.
Presumably.
Right. Because if if there are, if there are fees for multiple bills and they're issued, then there's an ongoing issue that may not be the table. And that needs to be looked at by all of us. So it just has to be.
Just make.
And it has to be our side, our issue. In other words, we created the issue that presented the uh.
So this is, this is going back all the way to August. We're credit for not being a fight with the residents. The penalties are being assessed when no fights are due. And you know, why do you report that in active? So, I mean. Do we have, when we, cause Edmunds handles our utility billing and they have a utility billing department and support. Now what you have to do is call Edmunds and ask for the UB department and and they will pay an answer for this. Um but going back to August, it's just unacceptable. Now we're looking at October and it's still an outstanding issue. What what I'd like to know is, was there uh. A case open to this? Was there an issue? Cause when you call Edmunds or BAS and you ask, when you have an issue, they open up a support ticket. So was there a support ticket that we can track and see if anyone has addressed it?
Uh I will call Edmunds tomorrow.
Cause the minute you call them, whether it's, whether it's for the computers or the utility billing or or support. They ask with the bounce and then they they open up a case and they'll email you the case number.
I'll call Edmunds tomorrow and uh pass a motion. I'll take it one case by case on current billing.
Alright, so make a motion. I'll second. Any penalties associated with, I would say just. For last two billing cycles. Leave any penalties for the last two billing cycles as of filling. With respect to any penalties that are assessed to customers that are no fault of their own, from the payment, but due to either. Edmunds or the bank in terms of processing.
So you're making that up and supervisor.
Yes, I make that one.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes. Yes.
Right now, just the warrants. Make a motion to approve the warrants.
But just have one question on it. Then your sort of questions I both thank you. Um Lou crazy up for answering those questions, but the one thing. I wanted to still know is, why are we paying for lease sweat? There's charges in there for lease sweat.
That's what I can.
Yeah.
You second me?
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Silver town, that's great. All sees the control controls. Yes.
Should we watch?
Yes.
Resolution is how the town will support the submission of state municipal capital program application for the purchase and installation of ten random plan panels. To complete the veteran Vietnam veterans memorial wall. Is all the town will the town will hereby authorize and direct the town supervisor. Or is designated to execute submit the application for a grant in the state and municipal capital grant program. To request said funding and to execute any and all documents necessary to implement the grant if it is awarded to the town. If the project costs exceed the award one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the town will fund their share of the project through. This is general fund balance. They have motion.
So, second, and I just want to make a correction. It's twelve pieces.
So we know. So, yes. And we know if it's going to go over that the grant went.
Well, what we're gonna have to do is, just like anything else, we're gonna have to set a bid, right? But um. Alright, it's not gonna go over that.
Just to add, um. I'm getting the stop part. Uh since school students have been generous enough to provide us with this grant.
I sent the woman down there as well.
And sending one contest um that provides more money. We talked about this part to all the vets, you know, I think it's time. Yeah, we filed through and that the funds, it's not touching us and we gave us the money. So this is all, all one win.
Well, the grant from the two of them was for, that's what you requested. The one before, I mean, it was for, it was slated for this.
For this, correct, right.
Okay, we'll call.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Supervisor.
Yes. Um just want to add, um two of the vets here tonight. Thank you, Azul. Thank you for your service. Thank you for managing to come back because. Of your sacrifices and their sacrifice, we were sit here and have this great country cap. It's great for you. Thank you very much.
You said also that we're very fortunate of the veterans and this town is very fortunate to have a board like this. This is a, this is an amazing feat and um. I know, I know it's appreciated. Because when these boys came home, there was nobody to meet. They came home one at a time and it's taken fifty years to get to the point. Where they're being recognized for their sacrifice. So thank you very much for that.
Chugging as quickly as possible. So, I know you're you're heavily involved in this talk. We have a timeline on the delivery and finishing of. Please, okay, so once, the the process is gonna be a little lengthy, right? Because we've got to put this up a bit. Alright, we get the bitch back or have you, typically the way we. Company that we've been working with, it takes a whole year from the time that you order till the pieces start to arrive. Uh they were coming from South Africa. The pieces may not come from South Africa, because again, I know you're in control of the big process, right? But let's say, for instance, the same person, same company were to get this job, they'd then be coming from India, the pieces. Takes a year for them to be shipped over to Vermont. They need to be cut to spec to size. They're polished on five sides, front back.
And there are reasons why it's coming from either of those countries.
That's where it's. Yeah, the color. Yeah, jet black. So basically, you know, we get this thing moving and whatnot. I mean. It probably, I would think, where are we? We're in uh, we're heading to the winter of twenty two. So you're probably gonna be looking at. Like the spring of twenty four to be safe that all these pieces are installed.
So once you find the pieces, you lock in the price before it takes that long.
Oh yeah, once you order it, that's it. That's the country pays.
Hey, hello, you want? Hey, good evening. Actually, I I just wanted to talk quickly, not so much on the grant, but on the veteran's side, because my veterans are there. Number one, thank you for your service. Um heading out Saturday, week from this Saturday on the honor flight. And this time we have, the majority of the flight is going to be Vietnam veterans. We have um sixty three Vietnam veterans that are going on the flight. So I know Jim and Mike, um of course, are there and Rosie. Um you know, I know a couple of you have already been. Rosie, you should get on the list. It's gonna, it's gonna be a great time, you know, for a future flight. But just to talk while we have the veterans there, we had our meet and greet um this past Sunday. And we're taking a total of uh seventy nine veterans down to see the monuments. And for the first time, the majority are Vietnam veterans. We got a couple of town residents on the plane, so uh just wanted to share that um, you know, while you were talking about the wall and the grant and all the other great stuff going on.
Thank you, Lou.
Thanks, Lou.
Thanks, Lou. Alright.
Big thank you as well to the Senator and.
October, the small sections come.
Oh, yeah, yeah. We have three pieces. Let me fill you in on that. We've got three pieces on order. One of them is in Vermont at the moment. The other two are, I don't know, out in the Atlantic somewhere or I I'm not sure, you know. But um so three pieces are gonna be installed between now and the spring, you know, and then that's where you have the remainder, the twelve remaining pieces, so.
Will's plan for the nine Florida.
Yeah. Alright.
Yeah.
Next resolution.
The town board, town board will support the submission of the state municipal capital grant. For the construction of the dial.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Can we get a copy of that? It's real.
I've always wanted copies.
There you go, Mike.
Mike, it's real. Uh.
Oh, yeah. I always wanted copies.
Thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you very much. Went to sit in the rain. Thank you very much.
Resolution of the town board, the town board will support the submission of state municipal capital grant program. Application for the construction of a dial bus. Result of the town board, the town board will hereby authorize and direct the town supervisor, who is designated to execute and submit the application. For a grant from the state and municipal capital grant program to request said funding and to execute any and all documents necessary to implement the grant if it is awarded to the town. If successful, the town will fund their share of the project through the ARPA funding. Now motion.
So. Sorry. This question. I would think to the uh use of our funds for the remainder of the project. And we can use ARPA funds provided that they're not matching funds for federal grants, because this is a state grant coming from. Senator and our senator, and because it's related, it's one of the uses through the the treasury regulations that came down after um. The funds were made available to state and local governments. This is related to public safety and also um. A project where, because we use the dial buses in a lot of ways for those with less income and also they use it for transport to medical facilities, because the buses take people. To their doctors and so on. We can use the ARPA funds in this manner.
A few months ago, I spoke to someone in the state and they opened up all descriptions and and the guidelines as to how we use the ARPA.
Yes.
So it's definitely in there.
It's in there. I just wanted to let the board know I did take a fresh look at it to make sure we were not gonna run afoul and. And do anything that was gonna raise any eyebrows, any place of the controller's office or anywhere else. So I'm comfortable advising the board that we can use the ARPA funds in this manner. If it was a federal grant that we were using for the rest of it, we could, but because it's state, uh the senator is is arranging for the bulk of the money.
So just to give credit where credit's due, this is, this also is from Senator.
This is from Senator Schoofers. I want to give credit for giving this ones to the town. Um Lou. Lou, you want?
Yes, sir. Go ahead. Yep.
Talk a little about about the dial, the dial bus storage field that we're planning on building on it.
Yeah, they, yep. Basically, what we're gonna do is we're gonna mirror the new uh wash bay. And we're gonna be able to store our buses indoors. Um it'll provide for indoor storage for all the buses, which will help when we have weather type events, things like that. We're also gonna put a very small um reporting office in there, uh you know, bathroom, and that's where the drivers will report to um on a daily basis. Um because, you know, our our bus most successfully is being run uh, you know, out of the Warwick bus garage. Um so ultimately, we had a conversation with the senator. I think this started probably prior to the Fourth of July. And there were some funds available and um we took a portion of those funds and we're gonna put it towards this project. Um and like, uh you know, like Will already indicated in the supervisor, um the retainage out of this will come out of the ARPA funding. So this is really gonna help us. It'll help us uh maintain the vehicles better, store them indoors, keep them out of the weather, keep them out of snow, all that good stuff and uh. Enhance our operation and uh free up some pretty valuable space at the town hall also.
Thank you, Lou.
Thank you.
Assuming this motion passes, we should do a separate motion to specifically allocate these monies from a lot of the different, which is two, 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 two. After this, just so we don't decide to spend it on something else, we forget that. So we don't spend it twice. That's the one. So if the board's ready to go. Yeah, we're doing this resolution and all the other motions.
You know, uh Councilman Meyer's second date, so we'll call.
We vote to.
Oh, Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yeah.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Supervisor.
Yes.
Before we move on then, would someone like to make a motion? As of right now, that based on these calculations, the difference is two hundred and twenty two thousand one thirty six. We don't know what the final cost is gonna be. So you may wanna say.
I make a motion, two fifty of ARPA money to use for the balance out.
To allocate two hundred and fifty thousand dollars up to, up to, up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the town's ARPA funds. Towards the completion of the dial bus vehicle storage facility over and above the amount of the grant. From New York State as arranged by Senator Schoofers.
I made the motion, the second.
And I'm sorry. And to direct the town controller to uh make a proper notation in the town's records that said funds have been allocated for this purpose.
I don't think Stan will give me a second.
I just called.
Um yeah. Motion by Supervisor Strong, seconded by Mr. Meyer. Um and Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes. Yes.
Resolution, the town board and town board will consider the time and place for public hearing in respect to the benefit assessment law for this year twenty twenty. Uh the law of public hearing will be held by the town board on October twenty seventh, seven twenty five PM in respect to the benefit assessment law for this year twenty twenty three. Result of the town clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause public notice of said hearing to be given as provided by law.
So. Sorry.
Mr. Coin?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah.
Supervisor.
Yes.
Resolution to the town where the town will welcome setting a time and place for public hearing in respect to establishing the town water and sewer rates for fiscal year twenty twenty three. Result of public hearing will be held by the town board on October twenty seventh at seven twenty five P M. With respect to the proposed water sewer rate changes for fiscal year twenty twenty three. For the result, the town clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause public notice of said hearing to be given as provided by law.
So.
Second for discussion, yeah, discussion. So um Lou, if you can hear me, maybe you can um. Add to it, and and this this goes to the premise I also have with the fees for the for the boys and girls club summer camp, uh work the summer camp. Why are we not charging the out of district um higher rate than than the nickel increase? We. Broke for the town and and the outside um demand of resources.
The the only, the only out of district account, up until literally a month ago, we did not have any out of districts. The only out of district we have right now is the new plaza at the roundabout on way on um. Uh Dulston Town Road going off a shot. So historically, the out of district was always twice the rate, or not twice the rate, it was above the rate. However, or no, twice the rate, I'm sorry, so historically, it was always twice the rate, but we never had any takers. It was set up that way years ago when the town was going to enter into what they called the um mid orange uh study group. Where there may have been opportunities to provide water to other municipalities, so literally, we haven't charged anyone out of district until. This quarter, when the new Dulston Town Plaza went online.
So when we, when we sell water or uh to those projects that are coming out of Middletown, uh then I consider it out of district.
Which projects you talking about?
I I thought that there are certain projects in Middletown that connect to our.
No, the only, no, the only, the only interconnect, or not interconnect, but we have the Arfman agreement, of course, which goes back a hundred years. And the folks in the Arfman agreement actually pay the Middletown rates, which are now encroaching twenty dollars per thousand for water and sewer.
And that's the other. Yeah. So we got people and residents and businesses that get it from Middletown, but we don't have Middletown people getting it.
We don't, yeah, we don't supply anything to them, no.
The other way.
Yep.
Twenty dollars, twenty dollars or thousand for a thousand gallons there?
About that in the city of Middletown now for water and sewer, yeah.
I was trying to look that up before, but I couldn't find it.
Why, why wouldn't we keep the the rates double? Because over time, this is gonna, the the margin's gonna continue to shrink if we're doing five cents. In district and five cents out of district, why won't we do five cents in district and ten cents out of district to keep it, to keep it double?
I mean, we could, we could, if you like, like you said, that's all up for discussion. We just tip, yeah, we just typically, um you know, what we'll do is we'll add a nickel and that's the escalator. That's what was built into the water and sewer master plan when that was completed six, seven years ago. And historically, and if you read my email today, um due to the growth and to the closing out of some very large projects. We've got a very nice increase on our benefit uh our benefit assessment fees. And that doesn't affect any of our uh, you know, residents um or our rate payers directly, so. We certainly can absorb this, and that's your discussion, if you wanna, you know, if you wanna double the rate on the outside, make it a dime instead of a nickel, that's fine, too.
I I think I would be comfortable making it a dime just to keep, to keep it double, that way it's always double.
I would follow Middletown, instead of doing that, just double the out of, you know, so if it's two ninety now, we're going to two ninety five, it would just be double that for out of user. So you don't have to change it, you know.
You're saying the same thing on.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm just saying double whatever this is.
Yeah, we, yeah.
Just make it double.
Yeah. I'm saying the same. Okay, so five ninety and six thirty, yes. I'll change the percentages.
Yes, yeah, I'm just saying.
We all wanna do that.
Out of district should be just double whatever the other one is, so if it goes up thirty cents, it would go up sixty cents, we don't have to do it that way, we need to say whatever it is, they pay double.
But we do miss the rates and the resolution.
Yep, yep.
Right, so yeah, what I'm saying, maybe you should just say, it'll be, instead of having a number for out of district.
Has to be, you have to have a number.
Put a percentage, you know.
But you have to say the whole.
So just say it's five ninety and six thirty.
You know what I'm saying?
Just change the numbers. So then you gotta.
As a percentage, yes.
What I'm saying is you would have a statement that says, you know, out of district is double in district.
I can add a line that says that.
Because then it doesn't matter what it goes up in district, it'll always be double out of district. So say next year we do. Right, but what I'm saying is maybe the number goes up twenty cents one. We don't have to say the other one goes up forty, you know, automatically does it that statement that it goes up double whatever in district is.
I agree.
That's how I would do it.
I'll I'll put that in, but we have.
Right, it'll just double the number.
So um Council now has been seconded the resolution.
So I I moved to amend the the re- the resolution, I said add uh. Five cents to the added district.
Well. To reflect.
To reflect.
The out of district rate to reflect two times the amount of the in district rate for women.
So I make the motion, Supervisor. Remand. So all in favor to amend the motion?
Aye.
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 Now we're back to the original.
Now it goes back to the original.
Mr. Coin?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson? Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah.
Resolution to the town where the town will welcome setting a time and place for public hearing in respect to the town budget for fiscal year twenty twenty three. Result of the public hearing will be held by the town board on October twenty seventh, seven twenty four P M, with respect to the adoption of the town budget. For the fiscal year twenty twenty three, for the result that the town clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause notice of said public hearing to be given as provided by law.
So.
Sir.
Mr. Coin?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson? Supervisor. Resolution to the town where the town will schedule a regular November and December twenty twenty two meetings of the town. See now there, for the result, the regular meeting of the town where the town will presently scheduled for November twenty fourth, two thousand twenty two, shall be scheduled to November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty two at seven thirty P M. And the regular meeting of the town where the town will presently scheduled on December twenty second, two thousand twenty two, shall be rescheduled to December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty two at seven thirty three. Result of the town clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause public notice of said rescheduled meetings to be given as provided by law, motion.
So.
Second, discussion. Um when does the budget have to be voted on by, is that the tenth or is that twenty? The twenty, so.
Alright, so this is what.
The meeting on the seventeenth is will be where, when we vote.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor.
Motion going to exact yet. I discuss our personnel. All in favor?
Specific person.
Specific personnel.
Ever?
Aye.
Thank you.